Red light on over there, please. We'll go ahead and call the Ray County Commission Workshop to order for Tuesday, November the 11th. This time, I would like to ask Commissioner Dunn to say a prayer for us, please, and we'll have the play.
Let's pray. Dear Lord, we thank you for this day, thank you for each and every one of your many, many blessings, thank you for the opportunity to meet here, and today, dear Lord, we thank you for the veterans and the freedom that they have given us. Praying you will be with us, lead God and direct us, be with those who are unable to be here. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Y'all, please, do you want me to pledge to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, in due republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to take just a moment to recognize our veterans, we do have some veterans in the room, if I could get my veterans, please, to stand. I would like to say thank you for your service to our country and to us as well. And to each of you that stood or still serving your community locally as well, and thank you very much for that. Y'all are very blessed, that's to our community and to our country. Thank you. That being said, Ms. Alex, First Item of the Business Tourism Director and Mr. Lee Booker to address the commission concerning Tennessee 250. Ma'am, sir.
So, just to start, I wanted to give you a brief overview of kind of what we're looking at for next year. Um, we have a committee built, and we are planning three separate events so that each of our cities are represented. Um, we are going to do Shake the Light Day for Spring City, a No Key Entire Summer Night Day for Friday for Dayton, and then the Freedom Fireworks for Grayville. So, we're going to build off of those that are already popular in each of our cities, um, and do fireworks and sell shirts and, um, really try to get more people there to celebrate. So, that's kind of what we're looking at, just a quick overview for that.
Now, that No Key in Summer Night, that's the month of June, every Friday, right?
Yes, and we're going to do back-to-back. So, the actual dates are... Grayville is July 4th, um, Spring City is June 27th, and Dayton is June 26th. So, 26th, 27th, and July 4th. So, they're pretty close together, all the cities. Any questions so far that I can send to the committee? Or suggestion? Okay, Lee's going to talk about, um, a flag idea for us.
The flag is on I-40, exit 283. Does everybody have... Does the commissioners know what's a flag that I'm talking about?
Yeah, so you...
Is it...
Yes.
We don't have to go that big, but I just want to give y'all some permission to move forward.
One other thing, Lee, of course, being my neighbor there in Spring City, he came and spoke with me and asked if we consider, uh, first off, checking to make certain that the property at interest to the high school was, was, was the area that was mentioned. Uh, we have talked about over the last fifteen years, several different ideas for that piece of property. But that's in the center of the county, it's not directed into one particular municipality or another. It is where our county fair is, or one of our middle schools, our high school, it's a high traffic area, and once again, like I say, it's in the middle of our county. And to discuss the possibility of looking into using that section near, uh, when you're facing the high school, either the left or the right-hand side, where the school sign is on the left, it's kind of vacant on the right, for, uh, uh, any one of those areas to put this flag. The flag he's talking about is close to the kid dealership, uh, on I-40 in Cook, uh, Madison. But we have to have a game plan to start, if that is feasible, if the school property or if the property near the school is the county property, if it is the school's property. Number two, also, we need to find out about how far off of the roadway it would have to be in order to make the progress state regulations, and what kind of size we are. So, I would kind of like to put that idea together, and then let's look at the possibility of getting some prices. Because when you price a very large flag, that shocks you, but not near as much as that flag holder. And how it is installed, and the way it is done, has to make up for the, the resistance from the wind, uh, and the weather. So, with that being said, if this is...
Mr. Chairman, you said, you know, you said before, we always want something to draw attention.
Yes.
I think that's a very good idea.
I think it's a perfect location as well, and if you would please the commission, I, I would like to, to just say that, that what I would like to do is go ahead and put Mr. Booker and Ms. Alex into thought process of, let's look at that, for the flag, cost of install, and, and that whole avenue, and then let's look and determine who actually has control of that property. Are we going to have to say, Dr. Lomis, will you please see if your board will allow us? Or if we're going to have to say, Mr. Mayor, will you please allow us? Let's find out who we actually have to get permission from, and get the regulations from the state, may I, if you don't mind, of how far off we have to be. Because the one reason we'll check with T-Dark is because this is not a typical sign in State Highway 29, US Route 27, or I may have those by the state, State Highway 29. That is a historic road. That's the reason you don't see billboards out in the county. They're only in the municipality. There are certain regul- regulations that has to do with that, that particular road. So, I want to check on that as well, and make certain that we're not wasting a lot of our, of our energy trying to do this out actually in the county. So, if it pleases the commission, I'd like for them to go ahead and, and, uh, let's move forward so we can get some more information on that, and hopefully deal with it, uh, in the December time, because there will be a month period to try to push it forward. So, if that's okay?
I recommend we move forward.
All right, then, then please, let's get our information together, and Mayor, and Dr. Lomis, y'all, please, determine on where we're at on the, on the property situation.
I think I know, but I'll look.
I think I do too, but I want to make certain. Anything else?
And I'm sure that there was other businesses that would participate, might have saved a thousand, man, with concrete, and sure, some of these companies in local will help out with that.
Thanks.
About Ray and Martin probably will be with the transmission line.
Thank you all. Next item up is discuss an agreement for grant administration services, Tourism Director.
Okay, so this is the three-star grant, um, $150,000 that y'all approved the last meeting, and I said I was administering it. I'm wrong. So, it's, it's a contract that we have to have a third party administer the grant. So, we talked with Southeast Development and said to them, most spend a ton to the grant to help us out. Um, there's no, the fee is already marked into the contract budget, um, so it's not going to take anything else, like, out of our pocket in addition to this. Does that make sense?
Yes, ma'am. Do you already have the contract from them?
Yes.
We do. All right, so if it pleases the commission, we'll place that contract on the agenda for next week or so. All right, we'll place that on the agenda.
Thank you, sorry about that.
You're fine. Uh, next item up is discuss Ray County Election Commission Grant. Do I have someone here from Madison that is representing that?
Um, I have already received this money and spent it, I just never had a contract.
Okay, so if it pleases the commission, we'll place it on the agenda for the Gray County Election Commission Grant, which was a zero-dollar matching grant in the amount of 105,521, and that way, we can take it, pass it through for the state of Tennessee directly.
Understood.
All right, we'll place that on the agenda. Next item is discuss Deadline Extension Contract Amendment Convenience Center Grant. Mayor?
Yes, um, you can get the chair back, please. On the, um, convenience center in Old Washington, we've had to delay it, and the grant has been spent by the end of November. And I called them, and got them to agree to extend it, and they extended it to January the 3rd. So, I just need approval to keep that grant from going away. And that grant is not just for, uh, the Old Washington one, it includes the money that we got for the one on Highway 60, it includes the new receivers that we put in Morganham and Grayville, it includes nine metal, which are two different grants, but they all together, uh, nine new forty-yard dumpsters for all the convenience centers. So, it's imperative that we get through those grants by the end of January.
And so, that, basically, you did six things, and so, that, that recycling grant also to extend it as well. All right, so if it pleases the commission, we'll place on the agenda to extend both of the, to take into consideration extending both of those to January the 30, what'd you say, 31st? January 31st of 2026?
Mr. Chair.
Thanks. Well, it's a pleasure, Commissioner, we're going to vote on whether we extend the grants or not, if they will end this month, and we're not in position for it.
We need to move forward.
Is the agenda for both of us, Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. All right, number eight, discuss ledger agreement, uh, Direct Appropriations Grant for Government Entities Archives.
Yes, that's me too. This is a non-matching grant from the, uh, Tennessee State Department, I believe, right? I was just getting some.
All right, let's see, it is for, uh, and I, and Ms. Carmen is not to be representing that tonight, she looked around the room and got stuck with the outside, so let me run that through.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I was in local affairs.
Ray County Archives has been selected, received, funding the amount of $19,869 for foundation history, uh, preserved Ray County historic records for America's 250th Project, as described in submitted grant application. Projects must be completed by April 30th, 2027, and this is a non-matching grant, is that correct, ma'am? Our portion will be inch and a half with our archives.
Yes, sir.
If it pleases the commission, we'll place that on the agenda.
Place on the agenda.
All right. Next item up, uh, comes a little bit of surprise to, uh, to me yesterday, as, as well as to you all today. Uh, we have a pilot program that has been requested, in fact, has been requested from , uh, Ladyboy and the City of Dayton, the City of Dayton has already voted on this. Where time is of the essence on this is the reason it is coming in very quickly, is because this is something that they're trying to take care of in the calendar year of 2025. This is a, uh, a pilot program, um, that actually is very similar to the food city program, but is just a little bit more stringent, I guess is the word that I would like to use. Um, and it will be a, a less number of, of, uh, employees, very large investment, uh, but you all have the actual resolution. I had her also forward you the email that, uh, uh, Mayor and myself received concerning the request to, to move on, to put this on to our agenda.
Mr. Chairman.
Sir. Yes, sir.
If the commission will recall, oh, I guess it's been what, a year and a half ago, we met with the city because we've been having discussions separately, and the commission decided it was prudent for us to meet with the city and come up with a minimum grant, uh, pilot that we were willing to give without them. In other words, the way it's been, we've passed it, the city might turn that, city passed it, we might, we've had a lot of who shot John arguments on that. So, we had a roundtable discussion down at the Channing Field, Wellness Center, and we all voted and designed a pilot that pleased both the county commission and the city council as a starting place. Uh, so when business accepts this, they're accepting what we felt like was the best thing for the county and the city. And let me give you a couple of quick examples, you'll refresh your memory. Uh, we had a lot of pilots that went fifteen years, twenty years, one went thirty, if you know. We agreed at that meeting that we would offer up to ten years at, uh, as a prime, but that they only got a hundred percent of the property tax, they don't get a hundred, I'll cover that in a second, but a hundred percent of what they get, they only get for the first five years, and then the second five years, pro-rata, it goes up twenty percent a year. So, at the end of ten years, they're paying a hundred percent. But the real benefit for the county is, uh, we agreed not to give them in this particular pilot, they do not, they have to pay the school tax, both city and county school tax that are in the city, and we didn't abate the personal property. So, that's all the equipment now, which is huge and a big warehouse project. So, that's all this pilot is, is they get one hundred percent of just the, uh, tax portion that's not the schools. And then they get that for five years, then it steps up twenty percent a year for the next five. They get none, but we, we receive all our personal impacts. It's probably the best pilot, and we all felt good about it, on the left, that's probably the best pilot the county could design, uh, to protect our schools and revenue for the county. Ladies and boy accepted this pilot, which I tell you, ladies and boy never ceases to blame me how they treat this county. When we made this offer, you know, they accepted it right on. You know, it's kind of a pre-engineered plan for a crap site. Thank you.
Yes, sir, and this has all transpired from A to this point, since our last meeting, it has moved very, very quickly. Probably one of the quickest situations I've seen come up like this, ladies and boy has very much been moving fast with this to make this, this possible. So, that, once again, the city sends their, uh, uh, reasoning of why it has come forward this way instead of the joint meeting, obviously talked about before, because time is of the essence, and it certainly has happened very quickly. And, um, if it pleases the commission, I'd like to ask to place that on the agenda.
So, listen.
Okay. Uh, commissioners, anything else to place on the agenda? Mr. Ralph, anything to place on the agenda? Mr. Mayor, anything to place on the agenda?
I've got a couple things to talk to you about.
Okay, is the agenda up? If it's, if it's not, I'll, you should just mention that.
I believe one of them.
Okay, go right here.
Um, you guys might have noticed, um, that you was over the weekend, that Hamilton County Mayor, uh, had his commission put together food banks, a hundred ninety-five thousand. I just happened to catch that, I think it was Thursday night. So, I called Jennifer Tourville, he gave them a hundred ninety-five thousand out of the brand beer, which is, uh, less restricted opioid than, and I questioned that, because it's not in my paperwork that you can do that. So, I called Jennifer, and she said that they made a mistake with theirs, that they just gave it straight to them with no, uh, restrictions. She said, "You can give it to them, but not the way they did it." And what happens when you do that is, of course, she had to pay it back. So, I asked her, I said, "Well, if you have proven it, would you mind drafting the verbiage that you want in the resolution for me to give our county attorney if we pass that?" And she said she would, I got a text from her today on holiday saying that prepared she'd give it to me tomorrow. So, that's, I covered that for us. Now, what I also asked the commission if they'd like to do, is we know the food stamps have been cut off for a month now, they're talking about going back into session and passing, uh, moving out of shutdown tomorrow, but they're also saying that it'll take two to four weeks to fund these items that's been cut. So, I wondered if we, as a body, would like to set an amount, and I don't, we don't need a hundred ninety-five thousand, but we don't have the other population, uh, that Hamilton County has, but I know our food banks are struggling. Uh, I've talked to a couple people this past week that they're, they're getting hit real hard, because folks that were on food stamps have been pulling food from the food banks. So, I wondered, with Thanksgiving coming up and Christmas, if we want, and by the way, on that fund, we have four hundred on the ground, or we are four hundred and twenty thousand in, we've not spent, we spent three hundred and thirty-five dollars.
Three ninety-three.
Three ninety-three, so I always span out four hundred and twenty thousand. Uh, this would be a way to put the money back on the streets here in Ray County. And I was thinking, now, this is just the three I know of, this is for you guys to decide too, but, um, I thought twenty-five thousand apiece for the three main food banks, we've got a large bank, Ray Oak Town, Church of God, we've got a large one in Spring City, and we've got Week Here who has a fine food bank over there in Morgantown, it's growing good and well. I didn't know, I come up with a number of like seventy-five thousand, give each one a twenty-five just to feed their inventory up for the holidays and for their short volume. But then I got to look into Hamilton County a little more, and they gave out some as little as ten thousand. So, really, you guys may know places that are feeding people and, and smaller food banks, I don't know. That, that's as much research as I've had time to do since I just heard about Thursday. It's the, uh, Jennifer Trueville did prove it. I even talked to Sarah, she's the one that's writing that information for us.
So, I just have to ask one question. I would support that, but the question I have is the verbiage, will that include them being able to bypass the application process that we normally have to?
Yeah, well, I think so, um, that's, that's, I guess we need to check with the...
That, that question I was supposed to ask, but I would support it, we get some of our rules.
We have to make sure we can bypass that.
Which we can do, but we probably have to have a real quick opioid meeting before next Tuesday.
We just, we got time to do that.
Yes.
Well, I just thought, you know, when he, when Wes did it, I even questioned, you know, I was listening to the amusement cast, I, and I thought, "That don't sound like that apply to me." And the more I listened to it, I thought, "Well, it's a grand idea, but I didn't think they done it right." So, when I checked with the state, they said, "No, they didn't." Uh, they just passed a resolution to fund the food banks, a hundred ninety-five thousand, paid it out of the opioid money, you can't do it that way. You'd have to direct the food banks, that's what your purpose is and what opioid funds' purpose is. And then she said, "We know you're not going to audit them, we're not going to require that, but you need to have that in your resolutions in case your audit can protect you."
One of the things...
Got all that took care of.
One of the things I'd like to correct me, uh, Mr. Chairman, is, is, if you're going to have that, we need to check with Ms. Jennifer and make certain the steps we need to take so that they don't say we did it wrong. Number two, about having a meeting, because these people are not applying like everyone else is having to do, so we need to make certain we got our eyes across our teeth. So, I would like to see that, that either Jim's office or somebody contact Ms. Barrett, somebody contact Ms. Jennifer, let's see where we're at.
I would be glad to because you, you, and then this, this is a purchase that I've heard it.
Yeah, me as well.
It's all brand new, we ain't had a burden, we hadn't burdened talking about it, but she's going to send an email tomorrow telling us what she wants in the resolution, and I'll share that with her.
So, do you want me to? If it pleases the commission, we'll patiently, patiently add that to the agenda.
Uh, Mr. Jennifer, we have to get on pretty quick Thanksgiving, right?
Yeah, we'll have to jump on this pretty quick.
Yeah, we need to pass it this Tuesday, because if we don't this next Tuesday, because if we don't, then we'll be in the middle of this, I'm not going to do that.
So, that'd be a food bank opioid fund donation.
Three food banks that you all are considering?
Well, just the three I know of.
And helping hands.
And helping hands, so they do the helping hand, Week Here, and then the other two you mentioned.
Oh, the Methodist Church also does a lot of cooking and takes meals down, it's convenient, I'm sure how.
Well, all we got to do is, but I would have an amount divided up according to the, the way I would have to do that, is you need to divide it up according to the size of people and their service. Uh, and the food banks are all pretty, pretty busy, uh, they do a lot, and that's why I said to split it, third, 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 uh, because, like the Ray Oak, they get assistance from checking the food bank. Week Here, I don't know if it's Spring City, but I know Week Here, I'm pretty sure they come, but that gives us a week to analyze who we're going to give it to, and we could give, if we set the amount at seventy-five, or we set where you guys want it, I just thought that sounded like a decent number to do the job. We can come back and split ten here, ten here, twenty here, thirty there, and we don't. It's not possible.
Well, how do we determine, uh, you, uh, how many food banks that are out there in the county that needs them?
Well, we have one more, set for, but it's a state food bank, they got, you know, the barns, I'm not going to give them any.
Yeah, nobody's, anybody's saying there, there's a Baptist church in there, and they have, they are several more around that does it, so how do we determine which ones that we're going to give to? I mean, because that's an important question, because, you know, and in that way, you know, people is not saying, "Well, you give it to this person, but you didn't give it to this."
Well, what we're trying to discover, I asked, is, I don't, you know, a small church, I don't know, guys, if, if you know a pastor, somebody you want to call, uh, they will. It has to be a 501(c)(3), we can't give it to unless they are.
Has to be a 501(c)(3) probably, and I'm not trying to speak to a legal matter, but a 501(c)(3) would be set up for food distribution.
Correct.
Because they have to have that set up in order to work with, there is a large food bank in the Hamilton County area that they get their food from as well. So, it's a distribution center for the other counties surrounding them, and so, I'm not trying to speak for them, I'm just, what I've been told for the Freedom Alliance actually did this seven years ago. And so, there'll have to be a 501(c)(3) seat that's set up for the food bank purposes. There's a lot of questions to this, which is, we're just here, the business comes up quick, but it'll be worked out hopefully, uh, long, long before Tuesday, but we will need an update of what the qualifications are going to be, and the different things like that, and Ms. Carmen thinks that that's all possible, so that we'll have an understanding when we come in Tuesday of what the requirements are going to be for these people to be able to, uh, ask for this, or how we pick who's going to get it. Because I promise you, if you pick five, there's going to be a sixth one that's going to, that's going to pop up that somebody was not aware of, or something like that.
There's probably a thousand in that county, they pick like six, or I think it's more picking the ones that are good on the volume, you know, covering the most people.
And, and you determine if you're wanting to do it, uh, the, the food box, food, for the food box situation, or for the hot meal situation, I think that, that's another way that people look at it also, because, uh, there's two different ones, if I'm not mistaken, in Spring City, in the food box, um, handout programs. So, definitely, there's a lot to look at there, but if it pleases the commission, we'll place that on the agenda. There's a lot of homework to be done with several different people, but we'll place that on the agenda.
So, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Mayor, you have something else?
One more quick thing. Uh, I mentioned to you guys a few months ago about the storage problem we've got in the garage inside the lot, a lot of squabbling going on, remind garbage trucks and rips, dump trucks, and fuel buses, it's getting to be quite a problem. Uh, we had to go up there and haul all our equipment out, uh, for the waste department, store it on a different lot. Um, I got busted a couple times last week, uh, causing parts wrecked, parking trucks, trailer, moldering, I got out some more locking hoppers out. So, what I wanted to ask you, let me do, tell you about, which will prove them, is on the left of the convenience center at Evansville, we've got a little small storage lot, not big enough for much of anything. I want to clear a couple acres, and I'll get bids, I didn't want to go to trouble sparking, you guys want to onboard with me? I'll get bids to clear that lot, rattle it, fence it, and we need to build about three sheds big enough to park. We've got a brand new hundred and thirty thousand dollar skid steer setting up for weather, we got three ton heads, we've got... We got three ton heads, we got all kinds of equipment, tow motors, different things like that, plus all the moldering equipment. What I thought I'd do is sign one over the body for maintenance, one of the sheds, one over the waste, and one over the parking wreck will get us off that hill. It's just a constant battle. And I hate to say this, but we get a lot of stuff tinkered with, and we don't want to tinker with it. Because if you're approval, I would take that out of my waste reserve. It won't cost a penny. That's what I did.
I would like to see us also put in that bid process of security measures.
Yes, thank you. So being stolen, but you know, when we get the mail and laying it out, it may need to be three acres. It might be, okay, because we've got five dump trucks, well, six, kind of small, and all kinds of canisters, and just like right now, I've got a big shed of the garage tied up with the equipment for the whole Washington Center. The way I see it, you do this, if you guys will give me permission, I've got plenty of money in my reserve to move and do it. In fact, my reserve is growing, and we're doing very well in the land space. So with your permission, I'd like to take that out of the bid process.
Uh, Mayor, that, that will go through the purchase and finance, and we, we have all members of the purchase and finance here. Mr. Chairman, is it okay?
Yes.
And Mr. Ralph, if you could go ahead and go forward with, with the mayor on that? And that will come through the purchase and finance, and the purchase and finance makes a determination of what they're going to do, and then it will come to the full commission. So hopefully we can have this to where it comes to the commission in December. I don't believe there's any way we can get it, where you're going to have to bid the process out.
Well, and build sheds and, and be ready for it next week. No, I agree with what I was trying to get at, is do I have the finance committee's permission to put it out for bids?
Yes, that's what they, we, so.
That's all we need.
Put it out for, is that when you all can get together, put the bid specs together with the chairman, get it approved, and go forward with that? Anything else, Mayor?
That's it.
Thank you, sir. Uh, listen, commissioners, anything else you follow up with the agenda? Senior public comments, Mr. Jack Coffin?
I sit there and there's been another split in the paper on back tax property. I would like you to look that over. Everybody should have a copy on their desk. I'll make a determination next week what should be done with that property. Because if you read it, it states there's no back taxes on said property, there's no attorney fees on said property, and there is no fees from a real estate agent on said property. So the bid of the property should go, ever you bid on the property. If you would mind putting that on the agenda, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Uh, Ms. Barrett, I'll, I'll refer that over to you because I don't have a copy.
I don't have one.
I don't have one.
One on everybody's desk?
No, I don't have one.
We don't have any on our head.
No, we don't?
Oh, he did.
Have you got one yet?
I'm looking.
I don't have one.
I don't have one.
I'd like to take that to the commission, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am. Because I don't hear the best in the world, but it sounds like it said, that what was in the paper said there was no.
That it takes a different basis, that's why I wanted to know what he said.
Okay, do you have a copy of the paperwork today?
I actually sent a stack of them when Mr. Coffin was passing by.
Well, then, then, okay. You have your copy. Oh, there it is. Oh, is everybody?
Yeah, right.
Oh, okay. It made it to me. Like so, you're trying to.
Are you saying this is what was in the paper?
Yes. Yeah, it doesn't say what you said it said, Jack.
Okay, what are you referring to?
This is the notice in the paper.
Correct.
Okay, and you said that it said there is no back taxes due, there's no attorney fees, and there's no real estate issues, and that is not stated in this notice.
That's right, it does not say that in that notice anywhere whatsoever.
Correct.
So, thank you. That's what I need you to verify. Nowhere does it say?
It does say there are none.
Right?
It doesn't say that there are none. In other words, when you and I talked this week, and we talked, I think it was this week or last week, I told you that the county paid the taxes to redeem the property. That has to be reimbursed, that's the people's money. They don't want to pay the taxes and sell the property for nothing. That would not be good stewardship with the commission. Then the realtor is entitled to a commission. Then the delinquent back tax attorney got paid, that the county commission paid, that has to be paid, and then there is a cost for the deed. You and I talked about that.
Yes, and my question to you once again is, why did you not disclose that in the paper? Because there are back taxes on it, that has been done here in Red County over and over again that I have been to. The prices of back taxes has always been in the paper, and they always discuss what fees will be in place.
Okay, you're confusing the sales, okay? Let me be clear.
Well, I'm not confusing the sales, because you didn't put down the price of back taxes or anything else, so nobody knows what to bid on. They don't know how much to bid on.
Let, let Ms. Barrett answer first, then. Ms. Barrett, go ahead.
You're bidding on the property, and everyone's free to bid. This notice says that there have been bidders, and anyone that wants to bid at least ten percent higher has ten days to do that. That's what this does do.
And that time has elapsed.
Well, I think this just went in the paper this week, and I think it's been ten days since, since what, the Wednesday paper, was that what it was in?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so that will be next Friday. So they've got until next Friday, that's ten days to bid higher. So if you bid five, and somebody else bids twenty-five or the ten percent higher, you'll get a call from the realtor that you all come at a certain place at time and start the bidding. You maybe ended up paying several hundred dollars for that property to be the highest bidder.
But what I'm saying is, y'all have to change the rules.
No, we haven't changed the rules.
Yes, you did.
Okay, well, I'm not going to argue with you. You said you had a lawyer, had your lawyer contact me. In fact, he'll already know the process, so maybe he'll explain it to you better.
You gotta recognize the process, because he's the one who's trying to beat that, and there's no taxes on there, there's no real estate fees on there, and there's no attorney fees on there.
Maybe look at the statute.
No.
Okay, we have any county official comments? Yes, sir, Mr. Jim?
Thank you all. As the head of building department and the floodplain, uh, floodplain prevention, or we have a new resolution. Sorry, I was just wondering about that. Anyway, Kevin Gardner, Jock Jeremy, B. Holling, and several others, we have been meeting for a little over a year. We had a meeting at the, um, up at the Justice Center to let the public know, that's where we all come in at that. But basically, um, we have to redo our resolution. The last one that we did was six twenty-six, two thousand eight. It was the number oh eight, oh seven, twenty-one. That being said, we're not changing anything in this, in this resolution.
So we're wishing to update the current resolution, is what we're wishing to do?
Yes.
So there's no verbiage? No verbiage change or anything like that?
Um, I'm not po, I'm not positive that.
Ms. Barrett?
You could update your cost. What it costs.
I can update our cost. We're checking into that. We're pulling the old, um, verbiage, and I can have that for y'all next week.
Okay, is this something that has to be done in November?
Yes.
Okay, so is this first?
It's the flood damage prevention resolution. There will be no changes unless they want to require additional cost for an application.
Okay, so the floodplain damage resolution?
The flood, the flood damage prevention resolution. There'll be a resolution to approve the flood damage prevention.
Okay.
And we'll just, between now and then, we'll have it all. If anybody has any questions, they're welcome to contact me.
This is something we have to vote to adopt, correct?
Yes.
Did you actually amend it?
I mean, I mean, what you brought out, you're supposed to.
Right.
Okay, so please, this commission will place that as I remember it.
So Lewis, come here.
All right. Any other county official reports? Sir, I believe you've got one?
I was just going to give another thing on the senior lives.
Okay, thank you, sir.
We talked about it earlier. I know that we, we had talked last month about updating the sewer system over there. The original cost was only a three thousand dollar cost, but in the original cost, we were looking at just doing a seventy-foot section of the pipe. Actually, we was able to get up there and do some more work. We decided that there's two different reservoirs up there, and each one of these reservoirs was going to a separate area. Well, we wanted to tie those together in order to update the entire system. Uh, the system that was up there that Spring City had was actually one inch higher than what we had, so there was no way that we could tie that in. So we ended up having to go three hundred and twenty foot with this system in order to tie into a manhole that was in Spring City. So the cost was actually, went from three thousand to about twelve thousand. Uh, that was with the rock, the extra material with the pipe. Brandon Gray was able to come up and help us, only charging us for his labor, and he charged us no other charge on anything. So that was a very minimal cost. The city of Dayton, we was actually able to contact them. What the cops said we was going to have to need as far as the county was really going to be a hole in that manhole in order to put the pipe through. We contacted the city of Dayton, and they were able to send up their safety crew in order to help drill that hole, so that was no cost to us. So we saved money everywhere that we could. The price of doing this, if we would contract it, that was up to twenty-five thousand dollars. So we were able to do half the cost. And, or, and running, we finished this project at seven o'clock Friday. We wanted to get done before the rain, got a way to keep the pipe to flow that we had already put in.
I want to say thank you for the, the hard work, and as I have mentioned this earlier, because this does follow in my district, uh, it's, it's very much needed. Uh, the situation was unfortunate of what happened. It's unfortunate that dealing with the actual city situation it turned into, we had to do a whole lot more work than it's where we was initially tapped into to start with. Uh, I want to say thank you to the city of Dayton for stepping up and helping the county in something that was totally not their responsibility, but that's something we have always done. The municipalities and the county have always worked together in every form of our local government to help each other out, and we was truly in a bind, and I appreciate them tremendously. I appreciate your work, I, I appreciate great funding for what they did. I actually had breakfast this morning with the young lady who is over the senior center, and they're so excited for the help that Red County has done for them. Um, I, I, I'm sure that Jack's father, Mr. Coffin, I have spoken with him, since it's been done, is extremely excited as well, and I want to say thank you to everybody involved. And commissioners, I apologize that it went above and beyond what we discussed, but I promise you this most, we should not have any more issues with it. Uh, and it also, as I, as I remember correctly, the size of the line.
Yes, sir.
Uh, was increased considerably in this also. So thank you, sir. And that unfortunately will come through as a budget amendment coming up. You all will see it next week, um, most likely it will come through that fast. But I do appreciate you, and commissioners, I appreciate your all's understanding, and what happens when you dig a hole and find that it's not exactly where it is, is a hole you're going to be. Like I say, my hat's off to Harvey and his crew, to great funding to the city of Dayton. Any other county official reports? Senior, uh, county executive comments?
Just one quick. Uh, gentlemen of the state, uh, I got a text from somebody on the commission here the other day, hoping to know about a plaque for us since we had gained the land and all, about to build on the college. And I contacted them during that time, I'm talking to them. They have invited myself, all nine commissioners, and the city council, and the mayor of Dayton to do a private tour of the college. It's getting really close. Uh, they're going to open in February. And the date that was set is December first, which is a Monday, at two o'clock. And we're all to meet him over at the college, and the college staff's going to be giving us a tour. Is it two o'clock? Two o'clock? I believe that's on Monday, if I remember right, December first, Monday, at two o'clock. Does that work for you, TV, guys?
Thank you.
Yeah, I think it'd be good. Everyone's house goes, got different things, and, uh.
They had the opportunity to tour the facility at Chedna State where they're welding program, you know, last, last week. Well, they're all excited about having this here so that they can get more students involved in the trades and this group side stuff.
They are very excited. Uh, just to give you a, I'm on that board, industrial board that meets with Chedna State regularly, and I got the last board meeting two weeks ago and added three more classes of curriculum to this new school, and told me that there was a large expansion right over the, the rise. Really, really excited. Okay, well, that's it. Everybody write that down now. If I remember, I'll send out a reminder. I don't even remember.
Uh, the commissioner comments, Mr. Lord?
Uh, I'd really like to want to thank Bobby for his leadership, what, what he done up there in Spring City. And then also on the, I thank you to Alex for putting this information, I'm going to give you right now, uh, next Thursday, November twentieth, with the high school. Uh, if you're all familiar with Forest, it's friends of Red County's elite, we're trying to get a visiting slash first responders park built right here in Dayton. So we're going to have our first fundraiser evening dinner on the twentieth, six o'clock to high school. So anybody interested in that, please let me know. Let me know, because I've got to get in that information now. So we got a few hundred, Phil, which said a few hundred so far.
Yes.
Great to go to this dinner, so. I'm excited about it, and, you know, hopefully we can break around next spring, so.
What time?
Six o'clock, next Thursday. But let me know, okay?
Thank you, sir, all the having. Mr. Jim?
Uh, yeah. Also on December first, just a reminder, we also have the open house apartment tour from that morning, so make sure you come out to apartment tours and that, that same December first, Monday morning. Uh, also today is a very special day. I want, I want to personally thank the veterans in the room for their service, but also the families of the veterans who also commit their time and their sacrifice to for our freedoms.
Uh, Mr. Nick? They'll say it, he goes. Mr. Nick?
I have to add to that.
Mr. William?
Yeah, I need to ask a question. I'm just thinking, okay, we're going to go back to, to the property just for a second. Open crew, you're saying that, that we don't have to sell the property unless it covers all our costs?
I'm sure I know what I don't. Under the statute. The statute is what he's not understanding. The statute extends the notice so that you're aware of all the links that the county has to collect. The county has to collect what they pay into, that's the federal dollars that redeem the property. They have to pay the cost of the delinquent tax attorney, which is ten percent. They have to pay the realtor, you all voted that by resolution, and have to pay it to the deed.
Right, okay. But it is really tricky, you own that piece of paper in that statute, right?
That statute has all that in there. That's why I said you need to read the statute. But, but we've talked about.
But we've talked about that.
Hey, and I also want to thank all the veterans, because you know, without y'all, we couldn't have this meeting here tonight, and you know, wouldn't have the freedom that we do now, so I appreciate you each and every one of y'all.
Mr. Phil?
Uh, everything's pretty much been said. I got one quick thing. The fair, I attended the fair meeting yesterday. Their banquet is in Lebanon on January seventeenth, and if anybody would like to attend State Fair Banquet, just let me know in plenty of time so I can compile this for them.